This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
This is live right here.
Here we go.
They can come down if they want.
Okay, we are, we're live.
I don't know, are we?
Calling to order, the meeting of the Select Board for April 6th at about 6:30 PM. Could we stand and say the Fledge of Legions, please?
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna, a couple of things we have to do first.
All right, ready? Vicki calling the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Uh, it is 6:32 and we're gonna have a joint meeting with the Select Board in reviewing budgets. First up would be the Fire Department.
A couple of things, we're gonna go just our usual quick motion, Ed, right? Just following your agenda?
Yes.
The no public hearings, open time for the public. Don't think I see anybody, quick. Um, Ed, do you have a quicky town report, administrative report?
Yes, I do.
And then we'll go to the budget.
Yep. Just to let you know, in preparation for the upcoming Municipal Vulnerability Planning Grant, MVP, Open Application Process, the Ad hoc Grant Committee in conjunction with the Highway Department will be submitting an application for an assessment and inventory of the culverts within Southampton. Uh, this will also assist with the town's MS4 stormwater requirements. And the Highway Department will be utilizing tie-in bond to help and assist us with the application process through existing funding. Uh, and as a coupling to that, even though it isn't in the report, I'll just remind everyone that Chris has mentioned this a couple of times, but we will be putting in an application for a raise grant. The Greenway Committee has volunteered to take that undertaking on and do it. It's a fairly complicated process, but just to let you know, they'll be putting in for planning and design and engineering funds for the Greenway project. And just so you aren't surprised, this will be a fairly hefty grant application, dollar amount, because the minimum actually application to be considered is $1 million. So they will be doing that, and I believe it's due next week.
Next week.
And then, lastly, just to let you know, the final extension for reimbursement to towns for employees' wages who have been out of work sick due to COVID-19 virus expired on April 1st. This was a reimbursement program from the state. I am concerned that without such a COVID-19 sick leave program, that employees will come to work when they are ill rather than use their benefited time or maybe do not have any benefited time remaining to be able to use. To help prevent the spread of the virus in the municipal workplace, I would like to submit an application for $20,000 to $25,000 from the ARPA funds, which may be used by employees who have received a professional COVID-19 test and have tested positive to extend their sick leave for COVID-19 purposes. If those funds are used up, we could look at another round in the future of ARPA funding for the same purpose. I will also draft the regulations for the use of the extended sick time. And I've got a loose draft here from some of the past programs that I edited out. Employees will be eligible for one additional week of paid sick leave for qualifying reasons through, and it says July 31st, 2021. It should say 2022. Our internal funding runs out if sooner. Full-time employees will be eligible for a maximum of 40 hours of leave, and part-time employees will be eligible for leave commencement with their average weekly hours worked. This leave may be used on an intermittent basis and in hourly increments. Employees may take this leave for the following reasons: to take care of themselves or obtain medical treatment due to COVID-19 diagnosis or symptoms, or to get or recover from a COVID-19 immunization, to follow a quarantine order or determination of a local state or local public health official, or the employee's healthcare provider, that the employee's presence in the workplace would jeopardize others due to actual or potential COVID-19 exposure, and to care for a covered direct family member in either of the above situations. Employees or the direct family member must have received a positive COVID-19 PCR test.
I'll move that section B be referred to PPP, who would be the governing body to oversee policy adjustments regarding employees.
Could I ask a question about that? Or do you want a second first?
I'll second it.
Okay, have a discussion, yeah? Okay, so on that particular one, was there a reason for July 31st? Was there a reason why July 31st?
I picked it in about four months from now, just to see how the numbers are doing. Like I say, I would probably put in for short money and just see how it lasts. So the two pieces were, okay, what are the numbers doing in the summertime? Does it make sense to renew it for that purpose? Or does it make sense, have we gone through the $20,000 or $25,000 if the Select Board approved that?
So we're basically without any coverage for employees that have got positive tests right now?
That, exactly.
And that may have used up their, their sick leave already.
Yeah.
It would make sense to me to have it be like on a quarterly basis, like April, May, June, and then, but, you know, I'm not married to the idea. It just seems logical that it would be done, updated and funded quarterly.
Okay, and is PQB gonna meet soon, or when are they meeting?
The third Thursday of the month. I mean, nothing in there would prevent the application, and I don't, the Select Board doesn't need to approve an application coming forward. I would suggest that the application note that draft language has been sent to PPP and trains could kind of move parallel, but.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, we have a motion on the table for this to actually go to PQB for the final language review and determination, is that right? Okay, but nothing will stop an application coming forward on the ARPA request. Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Could I ask another question about the report? Does the MVP having tie-in bond, participate, prevent them from any, if it's funded, to participate in the project at all?
No.
So they'd still be eligible?
They'd still be eligible, correct.
Is that okay?
Yes. It's acceptable.
Okay, so if nothing else, we have no old business, and I think this is really the Finance Committee's meeting, and we're just kind of here to listen to you guys, so we'll let you guys run it. In terms of the budget reviews, so go for it.
By your chief.
Would you, would the Finance Committee prefer the summary total up or the budget request worksheet up for the Fire EMS at this point?
I guess the, the individual worksheet with his budget would be better.
We can do that, we can do either.
Do we have that? In right here, okay.
John, can you just remind me the number of the special town meeting?
Twenty-five thousand.
Is that added, is that in here?
It's not in his 22 number, so it makes his ask look bigger than what it really is.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, it's, yeah, it's in my budget that I submitted. You're asking what the, what the.
We'll probably see it on, I don't think it printed out, but we may see it up on the screen, so let's see what, what shows up.
It should be printed out, too.
No, but in the workbook, you're gonna see that's the 2022 budget before any special town meeting money was added. So when you look at that number compared to his flat ask, and there's another ask, it looks like a substantial increase, but you have to add in what came at the STA, it's still an ask.
Yeah.
It's a smaller number.
And it would be helpful to, to actually have actual numbers for 2020 and actual numbers for 2021?
If I may ask, also, there was an accounting error when that came out, because there was 2% added to everyone's wage budget, but it wasn't, it didn't come out on my budget sheet with a 2% increase for that year. I was, I brought that up to Ed, he said, "Not to worry." I don't know if it needs to be rectified. If we're gonna rectify that sheet to show that $25,000, it would be good to show that 2% increase that was voted for everyone last year.
Okay.
It was just added the last like, was that what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
You're saying that the 2% COLAs were added?
Yeah, last year when it got voted in, it wasn't reflected in, in my wage budget. So there's, so there's that, so there's that that wasn't added in, and then there's, as John says, there's the $25,000 that got at town meeting, which wouldn't be reflected.
So Ed, are you going down to the actual budget sheet?
What's that?
Are you going to the actual budget sheet for Fire Department?
Yes, the actual budget request sheet.
That's not what we have.
It didn't go up, huh?
Yeah, because it would be helpful as a Finance Committee to look at, if we knew what the actual was for '21, we have the budgeted amount, but we don't have the actual spent, and so if it went over even then, then.
Well, and I think what, yeah.
Yeah, because you don't always know that all the money is spent out of the approved lines and it gets moved around.
Right.
And so we really need to see the spending pattern, the way it actually happens.
And I think on, at least on mine, unless you're looking at something, the printout only goes over to actual 20, 2020 budget, '21 is not.
Oh, then you probably just, because the, the actual Excel that Ed sent us today is 21, 22 in it.
It got cut off.
It's probably a formatting.
No, it's not on the back.
Yeah, I did, here it is.
Right, yeah.
Because they were originally set up so that the print, the print range was exactly that year that you were doing. So if you added more and then they didn't change the print range, then it's not gonna print right.
Okay, gotcha.
Some of these years should have been taken off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No problem, nope. I think it's important to get it.
Well, you just wanna make sure if you're looking at this year's budget, how does it compare to what you've spent in the past and what you budgeted for this year?
Yep, because it was complicated when I tried to explain my budget totals now, because I was trying to, a lot for.
I guess in the meantime, while they're looking for that, can you, why don't you tell us how many guys or women or people that you have working right now? Or you, what, what's your pool of people?
Yeah, so roster is honestly, because I've been adding some on, I, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit, I want to say it's probably about 45.
For, for both Fire and?
Yes, yeah, yeah. That's just the roster, and that's to, Fire coverage is whenever they call, and then the shift is two on, so it doesn't, the roster size is only to make sure that there's folks available for the two people on, 24/7.
And you still have three shifts?
Yeah, 24/7 through 65.
And are you finding it difficult to fill those shifts?
I was prior to the last town meeting where we had a fair wage for medics. So since then, I've had some medics come back, because it's, it's a second job for everyone, for the most part. So they were choosing to work other places, and now they're coming back. So I've really probably only expanded the roster by maybe a medic and some basics. I guess more basics have been coming in as well. But I've had people come back that are already on the roster, that have come back to work for us. So, yeah, we've been doing very well in regards to coverage. There's still some basic crews, but we haven't had the gaps in coverage that we'd had in the past. And that was the concern and why I went to town meeting, hall, town meeting, to get a wage increase, so that I could get people to come in.
People that want to come here and work, yeah.
Yes, because we, we had some gaps in coverage, yes.
Then does that mean that the number of mutual aid from East Hampton, has that gone down?
There's two mutual aids that, just to be, just, just.
I'm talking about the, yeah, the EMS.
So, so, yeah, so there's a, there's a, when you call for a, an intercept, so if we have a basic crew and you call for an intercept, that number is lower, but we still have some calls for intercept. Where we're really.
Because, because you don't have sufficient staff?
Because, because we don't have a paramedic on the staff at that, at that shift.
Okay.
But where we benefit and where we haven't had to call, there's been a couple instances only because our ambulance has been out of town, but where we have had staff for every call, so that's not a problem, because that was a concern before, is when we weren't having staff that were coming in for every call, then you're, you wouldn't see the number come across your desk, because it would just get billed by East Hampton. But that's why East Hampton wrote that letter to the town and said, "We can't just pick up your shortfalls, you need to."
So the, the $300 invoice that shows up now is strictly related to intercepts?
Correct, that's correct.
Because if they come in because our ambulance is already at Cooley Deck inside?
Uh, no, 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 they would come, there would be an intercept because we had a basic level crew.
No, I understand that, aside from that.
Yeah, you wouldn't see an invoice if they came in.
If they came in because either we didn't have the staff or our existing staff was tied up at hospital, non-employee.
You wouldn't see an invoice.
All that would flow, so what we're seeing on the warrant is strictly intercepts.
Correct. Yep, good question, and exactly right.
Do you, since Ed's got this up on the screen, do you wanna just go through your budget and explain, I guess, kind of how you came about your numbers and, and all that?
One more thing, scroll to the right. You're on 20 there, yeah.
Ed, is it possible for you to hide columns H, I, and J?
Because then we, we can see 21 and 22, we don't see that on the screen.
Right, so, exactly.
I'm gonna hit hide and unhide.
Okay, you're there.
How's that?
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, and I'm just, need to see what numbers you're showing up there, because basically, like the EMS wage, well, I have a corrected wage of, EMS wage on 21 was 220, 776, 97. There was 2% that needed to be added to those, and then there was the town meeting vote to raise pay for medics and some for basics. So there's the 2% that gets added on, there's the pay raise for, for personnel, and that's what brings the number, the corrected number to 236, and I think that's with the 2% as well, 236, 559, 39. Even with my glasses, I have a little trouble seeing.
Which line would that be, are you talking?
Uh, let's see, yeah, mess, yeah, hang on a second.
Mess wages, or?
I'm reading off a narrative, which I, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure.
EMS wages for, budget for 20.
Where are we?
Two is 220,000.
Yeah, two.
Yeah, 220, 77.
So, yes, there was, yeah, and then with a $34,000 approximate increase.
That should be on top of that?
Yeah, well, the part of the problem, that the 220,000 is, is not reflective of what John had mentioned before, which is the 25,000 that was allotted at town meeting, at the special town meeting, and it also isn't representative of the 2% increase that was done, that should have been reflected into that 220 originally.
Yeah.
My, my question is, the cumulative 652,000, right? That's under the 22 budget, is that the number that was on the, on the town board? And then the adjustments you're talking about happened afterwards? Or was the 652 actually increased by 2% and that's what was?
Well, the wages, the wages should have been increased by 2%.
Well, what was, what was the actual number posted on the warrant?
That got.
Was it the 652 or was it a bigger number because of the 2% passed on the original warrant? Or did it happen afterwards under the special town meeting when we approved the?
It, it should have, it, there was a mistake in accounting, it should have been reflected in, in last year's budget when it came through, and it, and it was not reflected there as an accounting error.
And I'm with you.
Okay.
But, but the 652 was, was what was passed at the, at the annual meeting.
Okay.
Right, and then because of the accounting error, the 2% was missing.
Yes.
After that vote.
After that vote.
Two things happened.
Yep.
One, you adjusted the 2% because of a prior vote that everybody got 2%.
Uh, no, I, I, it, the, the 2% was never added on to the budget.
I agree with you, but did you give the 2% out to the?
Yes, I gave the 2% out.
Right, the budget passed the 652, afterwards you, in theory, had money within your budget.
Correct.
And in your position as chief, you authorized the increase by 2%.
Correct.
Then also, with the special town meeting.
For the 25,000.
So those were all subsequent events, so.
That's correct.
So we are starting with 652, but two additional funding things happened.
Correct.
And the minimum wage adjustment?
Well, I think, yeah, I think that's one of the two, right?
No.
Well, that happened, that happened when we adjusted 25,000.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, so I guess, you take the 652, you multiply all the wage lines by 2% to come up with that number, and then you add in that 25,000 at the special town meeting.
Yep.
And that's where it's ending.
Last.
Your 2022 funding source.
Correct.
So the difference between that and his level, which is in column C, line 42, 727, is something, something less than the 1.5% that's showing there now.
Yeah, and, and honestly, what I did is I tried to explain that, because it is challenging, and I hope we're all together on it, because I certainly follow you, and hopefully we're all together. I went back through and just did a, how does that 3%, that the raise that was added mid-year, how would that affect my budget for a whole year? And so I added 26, 208 to both the Fire wages and the EMS wages. And then for the holiday, because that adds a, a number on, because part of it was holiday, that's $3,300 for each Fire and EMS wages. So I've, so that's how I looked at how the town meeting that gave the additional raise to paramedics and basics, that's how I added it into my budget on top of the 220. It gets pretty complicated, because it's not a true reflection of where the budget was, so I. Yeah.
This is why the software reports the budget, it needs to be entered whenever there's a town meeting, it needs to be reflecting the change in the budget, because this, it's, it's like we don't have true numbers. We're not, we don't, we're not, I don't know.
And that year-over-year change, that's supposed to be a formula of the 23 requests versus what was budgeted last year, but.
Right.
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah, yeah, so I had a challenge just trying to, you know, how do I calculate it? And then how is it reflected? Because how I calculate it was on the costs associated with the 2% that was missing, and what was voted in at the town meeting, and the holiday. And so I, I calculated that and, and added it up, and, and that's where I got the number that I did, that I presented. So it was hard to work from that original budget, only because you had to do so many things to make it factual.
So it looks like the 2% adjustment, you only applied 2% to EMT wages and Fire wages, excluded your salary line, right?
Correct.
That 2% represents $9,053 increase, and you add the 25,000 at town meeting, roughly $34,000 increase, to give your modified 2022 budget to $686,101, which.
So you're doing the 2% after the 25,000, right?
Yeah, I did the 2% first and then I added 25.
25.
25 first, no?
So the 22 budget?
But no, well, because the 25.
So what I, what I came up with was, on the, on the Fire wages, 2% was 236, 559, 39, and then EMS was 225, 192, 51.
That's what I had.
Yeah. And then, and then additionally, you have the town meeting raise calculated on individuals, and as I calculated that out through the year, that's where I got the 26, 208 to each of the Fire and EMS budget, and then the holiday, I calculated out, and that's where I got the 3,300 to each budget. But it's all working off the numbers that you just said.
So listen, what number do you have ending just the 20 budget? Do you have a total?
I probably didn't calculate it from there, because I just added on to everything. I could calculate it, because with, it would, it would, it would be the adjustment, so it would be the 236, 559, 39, and the 225, 519, 2.51, and then add it into every other line item, so I could do it, just sounding complicated as I do it here. Because I, I think Donna's correct, it'd be a whole lot easier if it was already reflected in there, because. But you're, but I think we're on the same page, I think we're talking the same thing now.
I mean, basically, if, if I'm understanding that the 20, the 20 budget for the EMS.
So if you change.
Was it 231, 920 or thereabouts, right?
Yes, but with, with the, with the 2% increase, it should, should reflect 236, 559, 39.
Yeah.
So if you change that on your sheet to that.
Can you just repeat that again?
Yeah, sure.
Is this 2020?
What?
What year are we talking about?
I'm sorry, I'm in 20, I'm sorry. What did I say? I'm in 2021, is it 2, 231, I'm on the wrong one again.
I don't think so, I think you're on the right one.
231 is 2020.
Yeah, you're right, because it was level funded in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so 231, 921, basically.
Yeah, with a 2% that should have been added on, and, and it was just an accounting error, because it wasn't added on, so that number should be reflective of 236, 559, 559, 39. And then the 220, 776, 97, should be reflective of 225, 192, 51.
Yeah, I agree, that's the 2%.
Yeah.
So that's an increase of $9,053.
Chris, you're looking like I feel.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, in the, in the 220, yeah, I got you, yeah, no, I'm following you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the 652, but then there's still the 25,000 to be.
Then there's still the 25,000 to be added on top, correct.
Which gives you 686.
All right, so the 686, so if you can scroll down, Ed, so we can see the total on the FY '23 budget.
So what's actually on the expense report now? Is it the correct amount? Is it the correct number? Because how can you look at your expense report, your budget and your actual, and know how much you have left if you don't have everything recorded?
Well, I keep me own separate databases, I know.
You know?
It would show, show up in the adjustments to the budget column in software.
So it was done then? The, the, in the adjustment column, they did add 25,000?
Correct.
However, it was broken out?
Correct.
Yeah, but, but they did not add the 2%.
So actually, we'll be looking at the correct numbers?
So we're somewhere at 681?
6, 686.
Why is it 686 if you add 25,000?
Does anyone have an expense report? It's an expense report, just.
When you add the 2%? You're going.
Those totals didn't come up, gotcha, yep, I'm sorry, yep.
And then you add 661, you add 25, you get 686.
686, okay, and then.
That comparable to the 727 is a 5.98% increase.
So if the expense report has everything correctly recorded, why don't we just take these numbers off the expense report and plug the budgeted numbers in here? Right?
Is everything?
Well, probably the correct way to do it, which I've never seen it done here, is to have a budgeted column for the year, and then amended budget column for the year, just so you know what was actually budgeted at the annual and what the changes were.
And then the actual, and then actual spend year-to-date, to see where it's true, where it's true.
So the.
Well, that comes, that comes, that comes on a software, that wouldn't come out of this. I mean, technically with this, then you probably should have another column that just says, basically, actually expended.
And who would do that, Ed?
The accountant.
So do we have a sense of where you are with your spending right now, at three quarters of the year through?
Uh, yep, yep, that's, I do. I don't know what you've seen, one thing that I had done was I.
That's what it shows in here.
Yeah.
So right now, my, as I projected out, just because, like I said, I've built my own database that projects, as I projected out, we look like we're gonna end up with some extra money in the wage account. It's a little bit hard to determine how much will be in that wage account.
So EMT wage is 254, 700.
But I, I'm guessing probably $10,000 to $15,000, because we'd, so out of that 25,000 that we used. I didn't have, I, I believe I will not have to use like up to 15,000. But payroll is about, you know, 18,000 to 20,000 every month, so if there's any, like big fires or, you know, things. If there's any like big fires or, you know, things that can throw it off pretty quickly. So that's just a projection at this point. So, so my wage accounts look pretty good, is the short answer. The, uh, expense account, uh, I am having some, uh, shortfalls in my expense account for, uh, ambulance expenses, for EMS expenses. Uh, and, uh, that's a large part in due to some software, um,
seven?
Uh, increases and also, uh, medical supply increases.
So it should be six fifty-six.
And the four thousand dollars that I put in for is still probably a little tight.
Okay, so that's what it is.
Uh, but considering that there's, um, projected extra money in the wage account. I wouldn't put any more than four thousand right now. I may, if we're projecting for next year, I would probably, I mean, I put four thousand for an increase in EMS expense. But with the costs of everything going up, that should probably be a five or six thousand dollar increase to really keep pace. Because, um, you know, depending on how many calls, as we do more calls, we use more supplies, and we are doing more calls. The numbers are unfortunately hard to pin down. There's not, you know, exact cost for each year, right? That's why I do estimates over how much time. And, and the database that I have, I mean, and, and just the regular expense sheet, if we had a current expense sheet, it would show that my, my closest line item would be my expense account. Which is why it's reflected with an increase in that budget.
And that's the EMS.
EMS expense.
EMS expenses?
Correct, yep.
Looks like it's.
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four, so it's up, because it's been forty-four since two thousand thirteen.
On my sheet, it says forty.
But it should reflect forty-four. I don't know why.
Go back up, go back up to twenty-two, yeah, we can't see it again.
Okay, I see it's tw- yeah.
Yeah.
FY twenty-two, okay.
Can I ask you a question? The total isn't a total.
Yeah, the total of the fiscal twenty-three.
Isn't a sum.
Request is not a sum, it's not a formula, it's an incorrect number.
And those EMS expenses are forty, not forty, yeah, it's forty there.
Right.
Not, and so you're looking for forty-four, okay?
Correct, yep. It was FY twenty-three.
So if I add your budget one for twenty-three and add in the wish list request for a hundred and seven-five-ninety-two. Okay?
Okay.
Then I'm coming up with eight hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and one dollars, is that sound?
I'm sorry, I have to see some of those numbers. It's so hard to do it, just. I apologize, I'm having a little, it's hard to follow just the numbers, so.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at what would be the cost, your, what would be your total budget.
Overall.
Under the wish list.
Okay.
And I'm coming up with eight hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and one if I take the seven twenty-seven that's here and the one hundred and seven thousand and change that you have in your wish list.
Okay, so.
And then the year-to-year change, I'm, I'm not sure how that got calculated.
The wish list is, is, we're just looking at the FY twenty-three first column, are we not?
No.
Yes.
The wish list is the third column.
Right, but we're look, but.
The wish list, they put in the chief's salary in the wish list column, which is already, that shouldn't really be in that column.
I see.
So the request column though, so, so it's actually seven, seven thirty-three, one oh nine is what the request is.
Okay, so then, yeah, with the four thousand, okay, that makes sense then, because I was just looking at the numbers at the bottom.
Actually, technically.
And so that's, the six thousand that you see for the, is for fire truck maintenance, only because that's historically what's getting spent and it's just.
It seems to get cut every year.
Oh, yes.
Right, why isn't that in the budget one?
Uh, because it's never been funded. And so.
They always move, move lines.
I always move money over whenever there's been money left over in wage. I've used it for expense, and so if you look back to what's historically spent for the last nine years, the expense budgets have always been overspent. I've always had to shift money around at the end of the year.
That's why if we saw the actual, we would, if we saw the actual, then we would see.
Yeah, because.
Where it is that you need money.
Yeah, it's hard because what you, you see the, what was projected at town meeting, but then the actual spend is, is, would be a good number to look at because then you can see what, what line items get overspent. I agree.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand what this note means here. It says, percent added to town budget for, for benefits. What was that reference, referencing?
Let me see. Let me go back to that page.
I don't know, and here, I have a note in mind, said percent added to town budget for benefits. I'm not quite sure what that note meant. At, at least in the version I have, it says that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, for, for E- EMT wages, and if you looked over in the.
EMT and, and fire, yes.
Yeah, so if you looked over in the database that I supplied, I actually had notes written.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and then, and then I also added a tab to the database just with a, with a fire department narrative.
That's on a different page.
Just because it's so complicated, it just, it felt like I needed.
So these notes really shouldn't be here. Gotcha. Gotcha, okay.
And I can certainly be more than happy to share the notes that I have.
I, I think I have them in another email, but I had just brought up the most recent one and they were in that request column as a note, and so I was like, well, I'm not quite sure what that means.
Yeah, so the, 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 the budget sheet that I submitted, also I added a tab that is a narrative that kind of breaks down everything. Which hopefully will make it easier to understand.
Yeah, I don't think we have the narrative part, at least I don't, unless it's in my screen. Didn't print it.
So, um, your turnout gear.
Yeah, we've been really good.
Cycle it every year, every two years?
Um, well, we, there's a turnout gear allotment for everybody.
Okay.
And, and so we buy, um, uh, three to four sets every year.
Okay.
Because they expire in ten years, so.
You're still on that same cycle, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, and we've actually caught up because it was, it was a little bit shy with the number of people we had and the amount of old gear we had.
Uh huh.
But there's been a couple of grants now written, um, for, both for about twelve thousand dollars. Um, so about twenty-five thousand dollars in grants this year, which has helped us to catch up. So that's been a benefit.
I have a question.
Sure.
No, it makes sense.
If, if we're trying, if at least what I see here, it doesn't look like we're budgeting for twenty-four seventy ambulance service.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason why I say that is, if you have two people.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-four, seven, two sixty-five, that's seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight hours.
Okay.
Forty-eight hours times three hundred and sixty-five days.
Yep.
If I take the seventeen, five, twenty, and I divide it into your two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, it gives you an average pay grade of fourteen fifty-four hour.
But that's, but, so you'd have to combine both.
Fire and EMS wages.
So I guess, why are we putting so much money in fire?
Because if, if, if someone back, some years back, there was always a question as to, how do you, I mean, it makes it more difficult for me to break out the EMS and the fire. It's always been a challenge, and so it's about seventy percent EMS that we do for runs, about thirty percent fire ballpark. If I've got personnel at the station, if a call comes in for a fire call, they can go to a fire, they're going to handle that fire, they're firefighters. If they go to an EMS call, they're EMS people. And, um, so the challenge that I worked with finance committee some years back was to make it so that if we went on a call, we gave a three-hour minimum. So it's, let's take a, a ten-hour day. If I went on, if there was three medical calls, the three hours given to each one, that would be nine hours that'd be charged to EMS. The remaining hour would be split between EMS and fire because it could go either way, it could be a fire.
How many, how many years do you believe you've been doing, using this practice?
Since the last time I tried to make a process that worked with, um, with the finance committee. Because honestly, it's just.
More than three years or less than three years?
Probably three years.
Because I, I would argue that if you now have three years of data, you should be, you probably should look to your three-year average for budget purposes.
Okay.
To, to kind of make a, because I also, you know, in the back of my mind, I, I, I've heard from someone, not, not even one of the chiefs, but somebody else has suggested that we look to bring admin staff to you guys. It, it's just an idea that's out there, but I also know that you're paying admin folks within these EMS wages.
Correct.
So it's kind of it's a little bit blurry, that's all.
Yeah, it, it is blurry, and it's a challenge because it's, it's, you know, I've got forty-five part-time staff. Um, and so there's a lot of administrative, there's a lot of administrative. So whether it be, I've got some people that are dedicated just to billing. So, uh, an administrative staff, as I see it, utilized in the fire service where I could use them, would be more for scheduling appointments. Um, uh, ensuring that all the paperwork that gets generated by all the administrative oversight gets filed. I mean, appropriately, uh, just because that's a very time-consuming task. Um, so, uh, I do hire, uh, some of my guys to come back to do some filing. Um, I do try and do like some of the, um, the wage and some of that. Uh, I try and have my, a, a deputy who is responsible, because that's a database, I don't want too many people in. Um, that tries to do it when he's on shift. And that's worked out successfully because he picks up a fair amount of shifts. So some of that balances, some of that administrative balances out to when they're working.
Right, but, right, but when he's working, doesn't he give like an extra dollar an hour?
Not for doing, no.
Isn't there somebody that's getting an extra dollar an hour, so I can, some sort of work?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember we took.
Yeah, yeah, so, so if there were tasks to do additional work, then they're doing that additional work during their, during their, their work hours.
And I don't disagree with any, any process that you have in place on how you're doing it, I'm just, from, from an oversight position, it's, it's it's not very clearly defined in the numbers, you just see this, so to me, I see seven hundred, call it whatever, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Three-quarters of a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
But on, on the first test I run, we're not even paying them a wage. Be- because, because of just how we're doing the buckets, at least from a budget point of view.
Well, and, and what's the point of having it split between fire and EMS if he's just going through the motions to make it work so that the money comes out of the right pots at the end of the year? It's not an actual, it's not real, so what's the, why are we doing it?
You're not using history to.
If we're spending the same amount of money, why does it, does, is there a reason why we have to break it out this way?
Well, it makes it easier to justify additional money, but if you're not asking for more money, then you can, you can leave it.
I mean, you can run reports through payroll that would show how much, if someone is actually paid firefighting wages or EMS wages, if it was being accurately reported as such, but if it's just to, because that's how we've always done it, then I, I don't understand what the.
Yeah, my life would be easier if it was all combined. There is benefit to having the separation only because I have to, unlike Medicare, I've got to, um, I've got to document all my expense to Medicare because there's a possibility that we could get more uh, back from Medicare, depending on how much we outlay for EMS. And that just, that's only this year that we're sort of under the microscope with Medicare. So it, it, it's helpful to put more into EMS because that means we'll get a better rate back from Medicare this year. Uh, so there's some benefit to separating out, but it's really, it is labor-intensive and almost.
What happens if you have two, if you have a paramedic and EMT on duty?
Mm-hmm.
And a fire call comes in.
Yep.
And it's after hours, so you're not there.
Yep.
So do they, and there's just two of them, do they jump in the fire truck?
No, for, for, for daytime shift, we run the fire because that's when we don't have a lot of personnel. So, so I try to ensure that anyone that's working a day shift is both cross-trained in fire and EMS. At night, I try and dedicate the ambulance, um, to just the ambulance. Because if I break up that crew and then I have a firefighter that gets hurt at a fire scene, or if I need the ambulance to make an independent run for a medical run, um, I, I, I don't want to disable the ambulance. So for nighttime responses, um, I keep the ambulance dedicated to EMS.
So would we wait for somebody else to show up to take the fire truck out?
Correct. Yeah, because a fire call, I mean, you, let's say you get seven people that come out for a fire call, and then it's an alarm sounding and you're paying a bunch of money for an alarm sounding. Um, but if it's a structure fire, you want them all come in so that they can help. But it is challenging, and there is, you know, I mean, especially when you get into, you know, what's EMS, what's fire, I mean, that's why I worked with finance for so much last time and really built my databases around trying to make it more factual. You know, they'll get paid out of EMS, if it's, if we get three EMS calls, they get paid out of EMS. If, if they get fire calls, they get paid out of fire, and I just split it. You know, could I split it seventy and thirty? It might be a better split, but it's a little bit relative because it's all the same pot. And so I just tried to come out with something that made sense and didn't make it overly complicated uh, for billing purposes, because the important thing for me is that, you know, what they sign off on, the documentation that I have is all correct and factual.
And is it fair to assume that thus far this year, you've spent more out of the EMS wages than you have out of the fire wages?
Yeah.
Kind of the way that things run in general?
Correct, yes.
I mean, that's your, your more usual call unless there is some major fire here or another town that you've got to respond to.
Yep, yep.
I do think there's value though in having, um, you know, detail. You know, I think it helps to, it helps to project, I mean, I, I think that unless it's a huge administrative nightmare, there's value in knowing what's an OT line versus a regular wage line versus the different.
I do have wage lines for each, a- and I do have detail for each. So, so the question is, is it, does it, does it make sense to you? So the detail that I've worked out in the past with finance, um, did exactly that. It gave, it gave some definition to EMS, it gave some definition to fire, and then, and then the, the leftover time got split between fire and EMS.
I, I don't know, it would be the right, whether you go through the finance chair or what, but it'd be nice to see three years of actual payroll records in summary form, like fiscal year, with this department, to kind of see where those numbers are. And then, and then, from your side, take that out of the treasury, because that's what actually went into payroll records.
Yep.
But on your side, provide the definitions, the mirror, the two-up.
Yeah, whatever, I, I, I will try and make whatever you want to see work, I'll try and make it work, it's just.
But in theory, you're still going to come up with the same.
It's the same number.
Five hundred, five hundred and ten thousand dollars per day.
Yeah, yeah, because you, the only way to get a fair, like, you know, what, average pay would be to really add the numbers together and then divide.
Right, and on the weekends, does fire take priority as well during the day?
Yeah, there again, like for, for, because we don't have, you know, full-time staff dedicated to fire, um, your, your best staff responses for a fire call are going to be evenings and weekends.
Right, so do you really have a forty, maybe a sixty-hour window during a hundred and forty-four-hour week? Right, so sixty hours as a percentage of a hundred and forty-four hours, what is that? Possibly that's the percentage of the wages that should go into fire, because right now you're fifty-fifty, so it's almost like twelve hours a day, fire has priority. Just because you're evenly splitting the numbers.
If, so if they go in on no calls, then yes, it would be, have, it would be equally split between fire and EMS. And yet, we historically do seventy percent EMS and thirty percent fire.
Right, so if you're looking at an historical number, then the, I mean, it's okay to move money around in the budget, you should try to.
Yeah, what gets really difficult is all of a sudden when you start splitting like quarter-hours and, and, and putting that into trying to divide, you know, thirty-three, you know, percent of the wage is going to go towards, um, fire and, 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 you know, just.
And then, like, the other, again.
Sixty-seven.
You know, when we met one-on-one, I completely understood and bought into your theory on, on, on the, I'm not going to use his name. But the individual who's EMT certified but no longer able to serve because of his age.
Yep.
But he's still providing a value to you.
Yep.
He's being paid out of the EMS line item.
Yep.
But he really should be paid out of the admins section.
Oh, if there was an admin section, that would be great.
Well, but that's really what he's doing for you.
Yeah, but he, but he's actually, but it's, it's.
He's not going on calls.
He's not going on calls, but he's, 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 he's directly working EMS, and it's better for Medicare that I charge him to EMS.
EMS admin.
EMS admin, okay.
Because again, you're paying them out of the line item that, to the outsider, this line item is supposed to provide twenty-four seventy ambulance service to the town. You have to have this other piece, but it shouldn't be on that line.
So he only gets charged to EMS, he doesn't, his wage doesn't get split.
Right, but when I see EMS wage.
Yep.
I'm thinking these are the two people, twenty-four, seven, that are providing the ambulance service to the town. Now, and, and he's not on the ambulance doing the service, he's a vital part.
Yep.
But, but he's not part of that line item. Just like you're not part of that lineup, you're the, you're a part.
So, so you're trying to. Okay, so, so you're trying to break out any administrative?
Well, especially if a request is going to come forward to give you more administrative support, and you look at this, it looks like you have zero.
Yeah.
That's right.
And if you, if you're using somebody that's more highly skilled and more highly paid for basic clerical work, then I think that's a question we'd want to...
You're going to have to give me a secretary to figure this out, because honestly, this is crazy.
But I mean, no doubt about the admin support needed, I think, in many cases, but I mean...
Just to clarify, I believe that this person is triple-checking all the medical codes not to maximize reimbursement rates, which is, I would argue, is higher than...
Yeah, okay, okay. That's what we don't know.
But, right, it's, again, from an oversight point of view...
Yeah, yeah, and I've got, and then the other factor that comes into play is, you need, that person can change, like, I'm, that, he's about to retire, so all of a sudden, I may have to split some of his duties. So there's lots of challenges to then figure out, all of a sudden, would I have to change a whole payroll thing as to how that person who then got a new duty, as it is now, I just, you know...
Well, it would almost, I mean, if I was in your shoes, I'd want to break it up and make it's all line item and justify its expense. So that way, when the person retires, I'm very justified in the expense, I just need the backfill, versus now, I've got to find somebody to make it a stipend.
Because he comes out of EMS wages, then I just shift it over to either one or two people that also would come out of EMS wages.
Yeah.
I think this is an unusual year, not only the accounting issue, but the minimum wage adjustment, the special town meeting adjustment, I think it's, it's difficult to...
Yeah, this is not an easy budget year.
What bothers me the most is you had $7,000 worth of expenses for maintenance that's not being budgeted, so we know you're going to move money to...
They got to move money, yeah.
It makes more sense for me to, you know, budget that amount in. I mean, to have, to have no maintenance budget at all on a fire truck is ridiculous.
Yeah, it makes it challenging, and that's why at the end of the year, that's why I, you know, I transfer everything I can, and I run balance sheets so that I don't overspend my overall budget, but try and get what I need out of what's available in the budget.
So I think one thing you said, John, was that you might have 15,000 in excess wages this year?
I'm hoping to, yes.
Okay, and so would that be what you would shift around to cover your expense?
That could, or it could just go back to general fund, because, because the problem is if, if something came up where it got spent, that's why I was looking to...
I think he bugged you at that point.
I'm looking for a town warrant article that would transfer some money into, hang on a second, let me go to those.
I think historically, when the EMS ambulance wasn't a paramedic-driven 24-hour service, we used to appropriate money from the ambulance receipts reserve for the entire EMS costs. So if it was $200,000, they would appropriate the entire amount from the ambulance receipts reserve, but you can only use it for ambulance-related services. So if you didn't split it out, you would know how much was EMS-related, and if you didn't use it all, you had to put that money back. So I think...
That makes sense.
Pack into the receipts reserve, correct, if you don't use it. So if you split that out and you don't know how much is ambulance and how much is fire, I mean, now it's whatever, 100,000 bucks that, you know...
Yeah, 200,000, but our wages is just over 200, it's 231.
Yeah, so you know you're going to use it all, but if you had it all in one big pot, then...
Wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know.
Yep.
And if it was all fire, and none of it was ambulance, and you only spend 50 on ambulance, that 50 has to go back.
Yep.
So I think that's kind of part of the...
Reason for splitting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Stronger rationale to keep it split.
Yeah, and, and I think that'll come into play as the ambulance grows, because right now, our call volume was up by 100 calls last year. So as the call volume goes up, the receipts are going to go up.
And you could appropriate more money out of those receipts to cover more of the expenditures for the ambulance.
Yeah, and that would be at the time where if all of a sudden, the receipts were more than what appeared you were paying towards EMS, then it would be important to know that really, your numbers are covering EMS adequately.
So John, though, even, even though the call volume went up last year, am I correct in saying, though, that that, we weren't able to respond to those calls, right? That's why we have this...
We were able to respond to, to $200,000 worth of calls, and even probably a little bit better by the end of the year, but...
But what prompted the letter from East Hampton?
We did, we did have some, we did have some holes. And that, and it was, it was that coverage challenge is why I approached why East Hampton wrote their letter.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so ideally, if we'd had the coverage, we would have covered more of those East Hampton calls and added to our revenue.
Right, okay. And just one last one for me is, so why would you think you might have 15 left in wages?
Only because I run my own database, which projects what I have left in this fiscal year and what my averages are. So using averages on a payroll since the increase, because there's always a variant as whether you're using a basic, whether, you know, what dollar guy you're using. So I use the averages, as I project the averages out, it looks as though I'm going to have a surplus, and they've been pretty good in the past, so I'm pretty confident that I will have a surplus in wages. I hate to say that, because it's like counting chickens.
Well, it kind of makes sense, because we only took $25,000 out at town meeting, which was six months into the year. So that, in theory, that $25,000 was for half the year.
Yeah.
In a full year, you would use 50, but if you're going to have 15 left over for a full year, you really only need 20.
I think so.
Yeah, and we're...
You have those openings, I mean...
Yeah, and we're building up, we're actually, we're getting better coverage now with medics and things.
So that 15, if you have that surplus of 15,000, that would just go back to ambulance reserve receipts? Right?
Yeah, yeah, if it was left in that line item, it would.
If you, if you use less than the $100,000 or the $125,000 bucks, it'd have to go back, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And did you say that those, that line can be used for expenses as well?
Ambulance expenses.
Yes, ambulance expenses and...
And wages?
Wages, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we've also used it for payment of the ambulance debt.
Yeah, because it can be used for that. And money we put away for the stabilization.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd put in for three warrants, one was to try and re-establish for that stabilization for a new ambulance.
It's already there.
Yeah, there's some money still there, but it hasn't, didn't get any...
You have to put more money in.
No money got put in last year, and I was hoping to put money in this year. I know it had a discussion with Ed, he had some other ideas, which I'm not sure where the final is on some of that. But I put in for, for warrant articles for that stabilization for the, for a new ambulance once, because that's due on the truck replacement schedule for 2025 for new ambulance. And then, transfer from ambulance receipts to operating expense for $4,000 into the EMS expense, only because I know I'm going to be shy there. Now, ironically, I may be able, if there's excess in EMS wages, I may be able at the end of the year to transfer over. It's just a difficult thing as to whether I count on that, so it was just to be safe, it was better to write the warrant article to transfer from ambulance receipts another $4,000 into the expense because of increase in medical, medical supply costs. And then the third one... Oh, okay, it was just separate, for the burn permit money from the revolving account, just to, if there was a $5,000 cap, I'm looking to raise the cap on that money to offset a, to work with a request that I have in for capital to purchase the UTV, the response vehicle for wildland.
So, how do you revolve? Fire burn permits are revolving account?
Correct.
The max you can have revolving accounts, $5,000?
The max I can spend per year is 5,000.
So what's the balance?
It should be, it's getting towards the end of burn permit season, it ends May 1st, so we're still collecting funds up until that point. I don't have the number in front of me, but it'll be at least $20,000. So I certainly, it should be more than, I don't know, have an exact figure, because for one, we haven't stopped collecting for burn season yet.
And what's your best guess on what is the annual collection?
Five or six, five, no, that's not one year, probably $5,000 to $6,000 annual. So it's, it's more like a four-year collection.
So I understand the cap on what you can spend, but there's no cap on what you can have in the account?
I'm sorry?
In a revolving, like, there's no cap on how much you can collect in a revolving account before...
Not how much you can collect, the state statute only asks you at town meeting or done by city council to cap how much you can spend. And you can go back during the year to, like, in town, it would be finance and select board would be able to up that cap of what you can spend.
So the department head can spend up to $5,000 without any additional approval?
Correct, but at town meeting in May, they're going to have to renew how many, whatever that amount is, correct?
Yeah, and looking, because I know there's not a lot of money in town, so I was looking to use some of that burn permit money appropriately for a vehicle that would be wildland fires and medical response into deep woods. And that's part of that SCID unit grant that we'd gotten.
Right, right, we got part of the grant.
Yeah, we got part of it, yeah, so we got part of it, so we're getting there.
Right, and the $1,000 increase that you're asking for in ambulance billing?
Yes.
So, I assume there's a contract?
There's, they, they charge a percentage of what they bill, so as we...
The more you have, the more you're going to pay.
As we do more calls, and when I originally, when I started in 2013, that was an $8,000 line item, and in one prior town administrator regime, it was knocked down $1,000 to meet more factual costs, which worked, but we're starting to push that limit of cost, it's now getting, we're doing more calls, so they're charging more.
We had the same company for a while?
Same company.
Coastal?
Coastal, yeah.
We're all, we're all set.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure you're probably going to have more questions, and I'm more than happy to...
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, we go through the same discussions every budget season.
I know, I know, it's, yeah, yeah, and it's a challenge and it's complicated, it's not easy, straightforward budget, so...
I can appreciate and understand completely.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions on the select board side?
So you're not comfortable moving anything over into a truck maintenance line?
I don't have anything I can move to truck maintenance, that's my problem.
Yeah, so we basically just have to figure it out at the end of the year, to know what happens.
Yeah, so I usually figure out, like, what accounts has got what, and try and cover that truck maintenance, and...
Sorry, but isn't year one budget, sorry, request fiscal year 23 budget one, isn't that supposed to be level with the exception of wage adjustments?
Sure, probably, I'm sure that's what...
I almost think that your 1,000 request and your 4,000 request belong in your wish list.
And my 6,000 request.
That's already over there.
Okay, so, sure.
I mean, it's the same numbers, but I just...
Yeah.
Here, if that's the standard, we're going to apply to all the departments. The 1,000 increase and the 4,000 increase aren't wage-related, so those should be in, under the budget two wish list, which, along with the 6,000.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just here...
It doesn't have to be wage-related, it just has to be contractually related. So you have an expense that is, has a contractual increase to it.
It's fine, so it's contractual, contractual and which could be wage, so that leaves $1,000 in there. How, is the $4,000 increase the ambulance EMS expenses? Is that contractual, and why you're asking for that 4,000?
Some of it is, I would have to pull those contracts out. It wouldn't, wouldn't be the whole 4,000, because a lot of the costs came in, like the IO needles that you use, they're crazy money, I mean, they were a few thousand dollars. And so that was a big hit to that account, and there was also...
I mean, for the record, I think $11,000 is all legitimate requests, I just want to make sure that when we're comparing department over department...
Right, exactly.
It's all, you know, it's the same thing.
Yeah, because that's...
It's more of like a supply and demand?
Yep.
There's a higher demand for these things and less product, you know, prices are going up?
Yep, and that, honestly, that's the way I looked at it, I just looked at, you know, it was costing me more to do business for supplies, including some of those contractual supplies, contractual agreements.
What line item here are you charging your fuel off to?
The expense.
By individual, so when you fill up the ambulance, it goes to ambulance expense?
Yeah, and I've especially tried to do that this year because of the Medicaid, looking to isolate EMS expense.
Makes sense.
But it's also a little tough, because I don't get, like, the fuel cost directly from highways, often they go to the accounting department, and I don't always see them. So that's been a challenge that I work with Randall to try and straighten out in accounting. But yes, the ideal is that they would be split, dependent on what vehicle was being fueled.
I do think they need, you know...
And, and so, yeah, I think they're shifting them over, that's your guys, you know, how you want to look at it, for me, I'm just...
Or somewhere flagged or something, because I think, you know, when we come down to the bottom, the end of this, it's going to have to be tough decisions.
Yeah, for, for me, I'm just trying to give you why I put those in there.
And that extra thousand, just to be clear, that extra thousand in the, that you'd like in the ambulance billing, that's contractual or is it not?
Well, yeah, I mean, if they bill more and charge more, then it's got to come from somewhere.
They got a flat percentage of the way, it's not the number of bills.
It's not, we're not paying them X amount of money per year, it's all based on a percentage of the number billed.
So that should move over to the other column, right?
It shouldn't, both of those should move over to the other column.
Well, I see contractual, I see the $1,000 as contractual.
Yeah, it's contractual, you just don't know how much is going to get billed, and that's what drives that dollar amount.
Don't call that contractual.
It is.
Well, I mean, I don't, I...
I mean, it depends how you look at it, because the contract that...
Contractual's a fixed cost, this is not a fixed cost.
Yeah, but I have a contract with them that I'm, they're going to charge a certain percentage, so...
Contracts all over the place, it doesn't make it a cost.
So I think, I think with that line item, I think that that's a perfect example of why it would be good to see three, five or however many years of actual spending we have, right? Because then you can see the trip, you know, if you see it going up, you know, 100 bucks here, 100 bucks here.
Right.
And, because it looks like up above, again, I'm looking at budget numbers and I'm assuming they're, I'm making an assumption, but...
Yeah, I think that's the only way to really judge what that really looks like, is to look at what the, that's what I do, I look at, you know, what my history is.
Right.
But it's easier for me to look through my databases than to see it all up there.
Okay.
One more question.
Sure.
This current year that we're in, a portion of your compensation came from the line item.
Yes, it did.
Correct.
Where, where is that? And, because I thought I saw it in one version, but I just flipped it here, wasn't it under EMD?
It was under, yeah.
So there's nothing there now?
There's nothing in EMD now, it's all over here.
Did, yeah, but historically, it's not there either, so did we just wipe out five years' worth of history?
Oh, that's a good point.
Because I, I'm...
It was under a different...
No, all I did was took the $6,000 out of the fiscal year 23 request.
Right, so if I'm on EMD now, if you want to flip there...
It was, it was grant-funded.
Yeah, it was grant-funded, that's why you don't see any...
Prior.
It was never in the budget?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
It was never in the budget up until, I think...
CAREZAC, years ago.
Until it all hit the fan, really.
So we don't, we don't have a double $6,000 expense anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay, nothing else from the select board side? Good luck. Thank you, John.
Okay, you're welcome, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
All right, let's find the police up there.
When she said it was 45 minutes per speaker, but I've now lost faith in her.
Are you ready? Sure.
Guitarry, red page up there, I'll be all set.
Good evening, good evening.
Oh, don't do that.
Did everybody get my budget proposal, what I submitted to?
We have, we have something here, I think so.
Yeah, we have, we have this.
Oh, okay.
No explanation.
Um, Ed, do you have that? Perhaps you could email it to them, so-
Police, Ed, we need the police budget, not-
Because I have everything outlined specifically for everyone's, I mean, it's 25 pages long, but it accounts for every dime in my budget.
We don't have the narrative on select board side, maybe you do on finance side?
I think, did you, was that, was, did you-
Not what I sent yesterday, that's-
Oh, you sent yesterday, that was, that was just-
That was based on what's contractual increases.
Oh, okay, okay.
But that would probably be very helpful for you to, to review my, my budget. I submitted it to you, Ed, via email on the 10th of January.
Yes, and I thought Bradley had sent that out, so I will have to have him send that out again.
So we've got a budget request here of the one-
Well, if it's in your email, you could forward it now, maybe, so people can get it.
One, two?
That one, too. It's not a sum either, it's a-
What, what, you got 1.97?
I could, you know, I could make photocopies in paper format, if that would be something I could do very quickly.
Do you have access to your email, Ed, where you could forward?
No, I'm not on the network.
You might have sent it to me, but there were so many.
Um, I don't-
Not you, but I think when, when Bradley sent me, it was, every time I opened it, I kept opening the same one over and over again, so, um, let me just double-check here. Let's see, who sent me?
I just think that it might streamline any questions that you have, because it's detailed right, right to, to every, every expense.
All right, all right, here we go, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we ask for the narrative, it's helpful to have the narrative, so we understand what you guys have done, otherwise-
Make sure which one of these is the name, oh my god. All right, let me look. That's town clerk. Was it, um, was it a Word document, Ian?
It was, yes, and there should be two, there should be a dispatch and police. And I think it was also a tad, on the same email was the, I believe, the, the one that you have.
The library, these aren't, I might have, but I don't, like I said, these are all kinda, those are budgets. Town clerk. All right, so it's not in this email. There's just, they're all kinda like across, and they just, they don't have titles on them, so I'm not quite sure, without opening them all, which one is which. Found the library. Let's see, who's in this one?
You didn't get it either. No, I don't have any, any narrative from anybody.
Entitled, no, this is open space, yeah, I don't think that I have it here.
So, we, we see on the, on the sheet that you've got a 21, if you scroll down a little bit, it's a $21,000 increase ask, right?
That is pre-contractual agreements.
Pre-contractual, okay.
Right.
Library.
Yeah, I picked the wrong columns again.
Yeah, this one doesn't, this, the one that Bradley sent me with a whole bunch of documents only have the library, veterans, and town clerk with a, a narrative to it, so. So I don't have that one in particular. Like I said, he sent me a whole bunch of them with the library, the years wasn't in that one. I don't think. What other one do I have here? I got your cover sheet, it was sent in a, like a protected document.
Uh-uh.
Yeah. Thought I saw it somewhere, but-
Ian, do you have, in front of you, do you have this master document?
I, I have, yes.
So I think when it got sent to us, I think one of, one of your numbers got deleted. Can you tell us on your wish list what you have for police department expenses?
As far as an increase?
Yeah.
What made it an increase? Sure.
The cover should be plugged in there.
Scroll down, Ed, a little bit, please.
All right.
Ed, can you scroll down a little bit, so we can see the 23 request?
It's the one with that little red triangle.
Yeah.
That red triangle's got something missing in it.
Level funding is $68,556.
So my equipment maintenance increased, and what it increased was-
Sorry, Ian, it's the line above that one. Department expenses.
Department expenses, okay.
Level funding is $68,000.
68.
When we move over to the wish list, it's zeroed out, so you wiped out, somebody wiped out all your funding.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming it's at least 68.
So my, my, what I'm requesting for police expenses is-
Academy?
Uh, 68,556, 28.
No, that's the same in the wish list, right?
Yes.
Okay.
He found his document.
Okay, and do those totals, is that, the total's up corrected?
No.
Is it a formula for the total?
I gotta check.
Ian, I found it.
You did?
Yeah, it was one that you sent yesterday, it had the, what you sent me had the Word document on it.
No, that wouldn't have been it. It's not the packet that I, I have, I have two packets, dispatch.
It's in his original packet, I remember, with the worksheet.
Oh, this is only has-
It's unfortunate, because it, I mean, it goes down, it is so detailed.
Oh, this, I just looked at the first page, and it was, it's just the contractual increases that you did, so, okay, it's not the whole thing.
Yeah, it'll explain, it'll explain every cent of my budget.
All right, well, maybe we can try and talk it through the way we-
I can certainly make photocopies, at least the police budget, and the dispatch, if you want me-
Well, we'll probably have to come back around on some of this stuff anyway here, but-
All right, so let's see where we are here.
So the new total up here is not 1, 2, 3, 5, but it's 1, 2, 8, 7?
Yeah.
For the FY 23 budget?
Yes.
And then what is the year-to-year change? It's not 21,000, then?
Are we referring to the new contractual changes?
Well, I just want the totals, I want a formula as a total, so that we have some-
Yeah, these year-over-year changes aren't formulas, they're just numbers.
The total with the new contractual changes with, would be for police, 1,800,390,28, and dispatch, 264,603,04. And for police, that was a 3.1, 3.81% increase from my proposed, my original proposal, that would be represented up there, and for dispatch, that'd be a 4.12% increase.
So these numbers up here have the contractual obligations in them?
No.
They do not, okay, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Unless Ed just changed them.
I did, I changed them today.
Oh, okay, then they do.
Okay. And are they done with the contract? Did it get ratified?
The, I would say that the percentages have tentative agreements.
Okay.
Dispatch is done, just needs to be signed.
45.
And we're just about done with the police officers.
And highway, right?
Highway is done, yes.
I can say that I will have some surplus in wages, and I'm gonna request some transfers, because vests are needed for the police officers, and that's also a contractual, likely gonna be a contractual agreement, and I can pay likely through that, through a transfer for this year's budget, which would reduce my police expenses requested by $5,000 from, for next year.
And aren't they all in need of replacement?
About 10.
Yeah.
So how many full-time officers do you have now?
Myself included, 10. But they've come on at different stages, so they don't all need the vests.
No, no, but I'm just saying, just in general, so you have you, and then you have nine other officers, okay.
Officers, yes.
Just wasn't sure if, and you have any holes to fill?
No, besides part-time police officers.
Okay.
I have to take into account that, you know, I'm not gonna be getting many part-time police officers in the, in the future.
And how many do you, part-timers do you have now?
I believe five.
Five?
Five, and one is in the process of being hired with a conditional employment.
And what about dispatchers? How many dispatchers?
There's eight.
Eight, all full-time?
No.
No?
Four full-time, four part-time.
Okay.
That's not right.
Okay.
So I just, I just wanna confirm, your initial ask, which is level funding plus contractual cost, is, and then what I'm seeing is the same as your wish list, so-
Right, so if we weren't doing two-
Everything you're asking for, you believe is contractually?
No, because that's not, no, it wouldn't be, because the, well, the vests, at the time of the Sennill, were not contractually, but they're likely gonna be contractually. Some of the maintenance, well, you're talking about expenses? Yeah, it's just wish-
Well, again, the same comment that we did with fire department, is if budget one was supposed to be low-funded plus contractual obligations, right? That's that number. And then budget two would be that number plus your wish list.
Sure.
But here, what we're seeing is they're identical numbers.
Yes, and I, and I don't know why they're identical.
And regional lockup, do you get a pass again this year?
That should not be, no longer a fee.
Oh, okay, that's good to know.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll take more of those type of things.
Regional lockups, yeah, we all-
Just asking the question, because I knew last year, two years ago, they said no because of COVID and whatnot, but I wasn't sure if they were coming back to.
This number is lower than this number. Wasn't that a special town meeting? The wish list is lower.
I'm sorry?
For the regional lockup?
It was the annual town meeting last year, and then we used that money to fund the message boards and the cruiser, the radar.
Trying to make sense of this stuff. This wasn't right total, if you look at the formula, how did the formula? Yeah, I see that now. No, but click on yours, and it seems, but it should be. All right, so I'm gonna just-
Are there any grant funds available for vests?
There is, there's a federal grant fund, it's 50% reimbursable.
Are you limited to how many you can?
The, so I, yes, depending on how much that type of work, based on their expiration, so there, of a three, I should have enough for reimbursement of at least half of the, of the funding, so, and I think a vest now is about $1,100. So, it'll probably cost it on 10,000, a little bit over 10,000, maybe 11,000.
Bless you.
About 5,000 will be reimbursed, should be.
Yeah, well, when they get around to that. How is your, I'm just making some notes here, your cruiser situation, your, your car turnover?
Um, we're in, we're, we're in need of one this year.
Okay.
The, I, I put in for a pickup truck that is, that is what they consider pursuit-rated, so it can, it's, it's heavy enough to travel at excessive speeds if necessary. I have looked into some electric vehicles, trucks, but as of right now, I can't find any trucks that are actually out there that can be outfitted into a cruiser.
That would be nice to start that.
Would be.
I'd love to see that going.
Then you have to have a station to recharge it.
Yeah, but there's so many grants out there for electric-
A lot of, yeah, a lot of grants, they provide that for you.
Yeah.
And, and it certainly would be beneficial, but a lot of the upfitting companies currently don't know how to outfit the electrical vehicles with the equipment. At least that's the research that I've gathered so far.
Your building expenses, you, I'm gonna say, you, the generators working okay, the air conditioning?
Well, the generator, it, it is.
Do you, do you think you might need to increase that potentially for those types of things that happened this past year? Because the stuff is older, and it's, you know-
The generator requires a $1,500 contract.
Okay.
And we've actually combined that with the water department's generator as well. It's something that's necessary for the, I had it for the last two years, this year I had to transfer money to pay for that in order to get it, because it wasn't scheduled originally in the budget. But we actually, the last windstorm we had, our generator failed, and fortunately, because we had that contract, we were able to have somebody respond immediately and, and work on it. And we had, our 911 system went down, everything went down, so it's something that's absolutely necessary.
How old is that generator?
Oh, boy, would you happen to know how old that would be?
I thought that was, was new when I was here, wasn't that long ago?
It's, I would say it's, it's getting close to probably 10 years, I would think. I know that when they just serviced it, they used, they had to take parts from, they're not making the parts, a lot of the parts anymore.
Didn't it get smashed at one point? Didn't it get something ice smelling?
No, that was the air conditioning.
Oh, that was air conditioning, okay.
Sense put moved.
I'm like, if something got hit from ice, I couldn't remember which one it was.
Good lord.
So all of your equipment maintenance is, is just related to your vehicles?
No.
That's, everything is-
No, equipment, so that, that line item is specific to, I'll tell you exactly what it is. That's why I wish you had this, this would be so self-explanatory. So equipment maintenance is our, our CAD, which is our police records contract, that equipment for logs and police reporting, that's our copier contract, it's the radio consoles contract, it's the generator contract, it's the criminal history systems board, which we, we obtain all our information from, you know, as far as criminal history, that contract, and the all-traffic equipment contract, which is the message boards and the speed signs, and the fingerprint scanner service, and the TASER subscription plan. That is what included in the equipment maintenance, and that's why that increased so significantly.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So that's gonna jump up to another $9,000?
Yeah, it was $30,955. And that should remain the same. I've actually tried to reduce the police records contract, the CAD system, I think I might be able to reduce it by about $1,200 for certain features that we're just not even using.
And did the educational incentive, is that contractual, did that also go up?
That did go up. So the education incentive currently would be-
$3,200.
Currently, it's 38,932,96.
With the proposed contractual increases, it's 44,166,69. So it went up about $2,000.
The educational incentive is a percentage of whatever degree you get based on your base salary, so if your base salary goes up, that's gonna automatically go up wherever that base salary goes up by.
But that's not in the CBA?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
I don't remember that paragraph.
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's always been in there, and my guesses are not taking it out.
No, I don't know, I don't know. If it's there, it's there, but I've also, there's been many communities that have said, that have agreed to, you know, this is the grandfather day, if you hear from here or here, yeah, we're gonna continue on, but going forward, it's almost the morning, and I-
We did do that, but they reduced it.
2009, they reduced it.
They reduced the amount.
Yeah, so it's reduced from what the Quinn bill was.
Right.
So-
So in associates, for instance, when I was, when I was in that system, I had a masters, I was getting 25%. Now it's a bachelor's after, a bachelor's was 20%. Now a bachelor's post the elimination of the Quinn bill is 10%.
Which is two thousand and nine.
Right. So it's still a percentage, but has it, has it stopped?
No, no. It's been reduced, but it's in the CBA.
It's still there.
Specifically for, for newer officers.
Not, not for existing. Yeah, now is there?
They're all in the Dropbox.
Yeah, it does look like. Is there, with the new, the training academy, is that built in here somewhere for any people that have got to go to that? Is that cost in there?
For the, that actually, no, no, it is not, it is not in there, no.
Does it need to be, or is it?
Probably not, it's going to be limited, and it's going to be towards part-time expenses, so it'll be limited, because not many officers are getting what they call bridged over.
Oh, is that just communication, it starts the communication ones, okay. So you've kind of gone over most of this, on the OT, that's up.
I increased the OT, so what I did was I did not increase any wages, I just moved wages more, I took more out of wages and put it into OT with the anticipation of the fact that we're having less part-time officers. And we're going to need to fill shifts, vacation and so forth with overtime versus part-time officers. So I'm planning on limited part-time force.
Is there any discussion among other towns, police chiefs, about the impact that this is having on everyone?
Absolutely.
Struggling and, I mean, it's.
It absolutely is.
Part of the conference, actually, on Saturday.
Yeah.
East Hampton High School, there's a whole section on the impact on small towns of the police reform bill.
Even big cities.
Ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Yes. Many luck, John.
I've got it okay.
And then the police building expenses?
Yes.
That's up by like three thousand and what is?
Yep, let me explain, let me see what I have here, police building expenses.
While you're looking, Ed, who else shares custodial? Library, police in here?
Yes.
And fire, just doesn't have any?
They're big cleaners themselves.
So I included of that, and I'll, I'll itemize it for you, because it's itemized here. A janitorial supplies, this is based on six months of fiscal year twenty-two, was nine hundred and twenty dollars. Electric, based on fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-one, was just over nine thousand. Charter and spectrum is eight hundred and forty. Oil, gas and electric, based on FY twenty-two and twenty-one, was about four thousand, one hundred. Fire extinguisher inspections is four hundred dollars, and general supplies and incidentals is about five hundred. The water department is two hundred and fifty-eight, sixty. Septic service, and this is an old quote, was three fifty. I didn't do anything for furnace services. Trash disposals, eighteen hundred. Water coolers is a hundred and seventy dollars. I'm sorry, that's the actual water jugs. And then the rental fee for the cooler is a hundred and eight dollars a year.
Did you anticipate, I know at least in Westfield, the gas and electric is forecasting exponential increases, and I don't know if Hoyoke mentioned anything to Southampton about that, so that might be something.
I haven't seen that, I expect it, you know, in fact, I have to do, I'm asking for transfers from wages into building expenses, because I don't think I can support the electric bill as of right now.
That's a special town hall for this year, right?
Yes.
I'm just thinking that might be something the town might want to consider, is those, those expenses are going to be high.
It was actually one of the reasons that I went in and on the finance committee's sheet, where you had put, I think, five thousand dollars for a reserve account. I had actually, in the wish list column, put twenty, just because of the volatility of that, of, of gas and electric.
And also the volatility of gas prices, you know, when I submitted this, I was averaging about twelve hundred dollars a month in, in gas for cruisers.
For right.
Last month was twenty-two hundred, so it went up almost a hundred percent.
So the year-to-year change here looks like around six percent, is that right?
Six point oh nine.
And if that's with the contractual agreement, that is, you, you would think, because they don't, they don't only get colas, they get step increases for most of the officers. So you're going up several, from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-three now, because this is on fiscal year twenty-one's numbers. Because we have, we're, we're down a contract. You're looking at three to four steps for certain officers, based on the steps.
Right, right.
And dispatchers. The dispatcher would be a little lower, because three of the full-time dispatchers are actually, yeah, three of the full-time dispatchers are maxed out.
Well, your dispatcher wages went up five percent, five point oh five, police wages went up only three point six five. So dispatch is higher, so twice.
Well, they don't have a lot of expenses.
You're talking about wages? I don't know why that would be that. I could certainly, I, I'm going to submit, I'll submit my, my, my worksheets. They're, they're, they're very specific, and I think it's going to explain.
I've got, I've, I've got them, once I hook back up to the network, I'll send that narrative out to everybody.
I even have it down to where, what percentage of pay rate is for a certain amount of years during their step, a certain amount of months during the step to the next step, it's, it's that detailed.
Oh, that's, yeah, I'm sure you put a lot of work into it, I'm sure.
Then your next career is town accounting.
Oh, because you know what, in Westfield, that's how they do their salary budgets. It's like, if you move from a step two to a step three on May tenth, that's how it's all calculated.
It's based on percentages, right.
It's got to be a software program that can.
I just made a spreadsheet.
Manually, the, the police department wages is huge.
Wow.
Yeah. So they do it that way, because you have to, no.
So, so you're comfortable with everything that's in here, you're not making any sacrifices?
He's always making a try.
I told you about the.
He told us about the wages.
You're only asking for contractual adjustments, so you have nothing in your wish list?
Short of, yeah, yes, yeah, that, that's, that's, I believe that is correct, I believe that is correct. I, you know, by looking through this, I, I didn't realize that that, that was not fulfilled, so I'd have to look at it, you know, a little bit more detailed. I could tell you, like, for instance, the ballistic vests, that, that isn't necessary. If, if provided that the transfers go through, and I can pay for the ballistic vests with the surplus, through the, the board authorizes it, then five thousand dollars out of police expenses doesn't have to be there.
So all ten of them will be five thousand dollars total?
All ten of them will be ten thousand, provided that I get, that'll be what it'll cost initially, and if I get the reimbursements through the grants I applied through for the last three years, then, then I should, we should get fifty percent reimbursement.
When do you anticipate getting notice of whether or not you get that grant money?
I get notice, I, I get notice, it's just a.
So when do you anticipate, prior to?
So as soon as I get there, I don't know when I, I will get it, I have to, in fact, I've never submitted them. So I have to provide them with the, the receipts of the vests.
So it's a reimbursement?
It's a, it's all reimbursement.
We have purchaseful, yeah.
No, no, I'm, 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 I'm hoping to do it this year, so with what I have left in surplus, I'm hoping that, because I had a full-time police officer on leave for the entire year, for about three-fifths of his salary. He, he worked about three-fifths of his, of his salary, and then I had a full-time officer that had not been employed until I had a vacant position, that officer hadn't been employed since, she started her employment in February. So as a result, and because I can't have, I don't have part-time officers filling some shifts, so they've gone vacant, so I have surplus. And I'm hoping that if we can get the contracts over by the end of the fiscal year, I can pay all retro and the vests, all the contractual requirements with, with what I have.
That'd be great.
That's what I'm kind of working on, and I should be able to, provided that we finalize these.
And, and the chief just received notification at the end of last week that his application for a twenty-five hundred dollar grant to replace one of the defibrillators was approved.
Not replace, even, it just will be a new one.
Yeah, new one, yeah.
It'll be a new one, so, you know, if there's three cars on the road, like for instance, myself, when I'm working the days, I can have a defibrillator in my car.
That's great, okay. All right, any questions from select board folks? Nope, thank you. I think it would be helpful if we do catch up with the narrative and understand all the thinking that's gone behind this, you've obviously put a lot of work into this.
I can assure you, it's going to explain every cent of what I asked for.
No doubt. That would make our. Yes, no, thank you, we, yeah, it would make it a lot easier for them to understand.
It is extremely thorough.
All right, well, thank you, Ed, if for some reason you have a hard time finding, just let me know, I'll.
Once I'm on the network, I know right where it is.
Okay, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian.
Okay, next steps, what are we doing? Highway wise, are we aiming for tomorrow, or?
Yes.
And can we, do we have a narrative with that one, that we could get ahead of time as well?
I can send that one out too, just to make sure you got it.
Yeah, and maybe, were you all, you were requesting expenses too, or what were you asking for earlier, wasn't it? Actual expenses today?
They were looking for actual numbers, yeah.
And we had a, we had a expense report through end of March, didn't we, last meeting?
It's just confusing, because it's not summarized on these individual sheets, the numbers are accurate, so if, it depends, do we want to keep working back?
Depends on your perspective, the numbers are accurate to what was approved at the annual town meetings.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell us how well they're spending against that.
Doesn't the actual expenses?
But it's not the full budget, budgeted amount, if the budgets were adjusted at special town meetings.
They were never adjusted here, I'm telling you that, not on these sheets.
Right.
Because you, you also get into the perspective of, okay, is that a one-time adjustment, or is that a permanent adjustment?
Well, I think that's one of the things we want to look at, is how many times we come back and readjust for certain departments or line items.
Or how many line items just they need at the end of the year.
So Vicki, how many departments have you yet to meet?
So far, we only met last week with Board of Health, Library and Council on Aging.
Okay. I mean, are you in?
I don't know how many more we're meeting with, I mean, we don't have.
I mean, some of the smaller budgets probably, yeah.
Yeah, I think we were originally thinking we would meet with the departments that had increases, you know. The assessors would be the next one, and then I'll have to look and see on here what else.
Do you meet with the school reps from Norris?
We have, that's on tomorrow.
Okay.
What time are they coming?
Right after highway, I guess.
After highway?
Yeah.
We have to, to confirm who's, who's coming, because I know the business administrator, we thought I'll leave now because of death of the family. So I'm betting if the email only went to, to her.
Is that both for, just for Norris, or is that for both?
What's the regional?
Hampshire.
Business administrator.
Yeah, so Bobby's up there.
That's Bobby.
Okay.
And would you like to see the assessors tomorrow night too, if they're available?
The school could take a while.
The school could take a while.
It's three point.
Compared to the previous year.
It's three point five six, is that the bottom?
Yep, plus the one point something from regional is less than five percent.
Then we can probably do the assessors.
And that doesn't take, that doesn't take into account the reduction, the proposed, the anticipated reduction on the town's additional expenses that they pay, like busing. Well, busing's not going to be the issue, it's going to be the vote and the, on the district transportation, that isn't within that, somebody previously pulled it out of med school spending.
Out of the bunch that we have, the assessors would probably take the least amount of time, right? Or not?
Yes, because it's, it's basically just, I know they're looking to increase, because they can't find someone to fill that position, everything else is pretty consistent.
Principal assessor position is, yeah, probably the biggest change.
Yeah, is that one that you all just want to meet with yourselves, rather than, you know, just reserve the joint meeting for highway and school?
Yeah.
I think that makes the most sense.
Yep, wouldn't you say school maybe?
And then, you know, we can meet with other, we can decide which other ones, like church collector or, building is pretty straightforward, that's nothing. I know, I noticed that Concom had some money in here, and so did planning, which I need to review why there is planning board money.
I'll contact Paul, because I, my original understanding was that he, they put in fifteen thousand for legal to review their zoning bylaws that they're changing. And Paul, and then I talked to Paul and he said he thought five thousand would be enough, so I will double check with him on if that fifteen was originally all for legal and can be removed, or if there's something else in there, and I'll let you know, Vicki.
Then there's another one that says planning board revolving fund, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents.
That's, I, I think that ended up getting put in the wrong column or something, so. Yeah, they don't have to request the revolving fund.
Yeah, right. Remember when Paul came to the meeting, he was advocating for a staff position?
So I think both they and Concom are looking for some part-time staff. So conservation agent, part-time, and a planning board assistant of some sort.
Yeah, I think Wheatley hired somebody, and they, it was in the paper, and they were said, this is exactly what the planning board needs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think those are both of the, the ones that they're looking for.
I just want to mention that the bylaws committee's been working very, very hard to try to get bylaws for the town, and they've never really had a budget for bylaws, I just wanted to point that out.
Need a mental health budget at this point.
And how confident are you in these revenue projections here?
Very, and I actually, I actually think after what went through the Senate, as some amendments to the cannabis impact fees yesterday, that I can probably increase the, that a little bit, so.
Or did they continue the impact fee?
Actually, what they, one of the amendments, well, actually, they changed the main bill so that anyone that had a host agreement, it would be grandfathered at least for those first five years.
It just, it's just on the bottom of this.
Well, that kind of makes sense.
It does, I mean, eventually.
Change it, don't retro change it.
Eventually, I have an idea when the five years is up and everyone renews them, that it'll change dramatically, and that revenue source either won't be there, or will be greatly reduced, but.
In the meantime, we do have a, a significant amount in that line, and we need to discuss it before the end of the year.
Now, you have to be careful with the revenue from the cannabis, because the Department of Revenue doesn't really want you to use it unless you have two or three years worth of his, at least two years worth of history to use for revenue projections for the next year. At least that's what they told me.
Really?
Yes.
That's not, that's the impact and this?
No, just the cannabis, the three percent.
Just the three percent, but the one that was though, ten thousand or for three years?
Yeah, the, it's not the impact fee, I forget, but.
Is that the, that's the educational?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I remember doing the tax recap last year, and they were like, did you put cannabis in here? I said, no, and they said, you shouldn't, because unless you have two years worth of history, they're not going to be able to accept that as a revenue stream.
As a projection, yeah.
So not use it as a transfer, it's just going to go to free cash, right?
Correct.
On, just one thing if I can ask, because I, I'm not seeing it here, could you just scroll over to the town, townwide one at all?
What do you want?
Townwide, just scroll over, I just want to see the, the bottom line on that one. My, this didn't print out beyond two thousand and twenty on my page, and I don't have my little, I just want to see what the difference looks like here. So what are we looking at for? Okay, I just see it there, okay, so it was twenty-nine thousand difference at the bottom.
That's where we are.
I was thinking the county here, but they didn't want me to stay, so I left it.
Tab is not hard coded.
Okay.
Net or off?
Yeah, okay.
Is that spreadsheet going back and looking? Yeah, see, we'll know that it's on there. Could you pick one of the numbers up above? Oh, wait a minute.
What do you want to see?
No, I was thinking so.
That's not the whole.
It's a difference from last year to this year. Okay, okay.
What about the tree ward, because we always have to go back to special town meeting on that, what was the amount this year?
Right now, and you could probably say it's not contractual, but the amount in that budget one tab is fifteen thousand instead of the eight thousand. is $15,000 instead of the $8,000.
All right, so tomorrow we have highway and, and school.
And Norris, okay.
So, I won't be able to be here, just so I have another commitment.
Can we just confirm that someone from Norris is...
Can be here?
They do it.
Bobby's not here.
So, I don't know who they're going to send.
I will do that.
Can we also just review the timeline here? It's helpful for me to have a little bit more notice of meetings than, less than a week. So, if we can just review the timeline, like, when things are due, and when do we review capital and all that? Because we just got the thing from Margaret today, right?
Right, we just got that piece today for capital, right. So, our next scheduled meeting is on the 12th for select board.
Well, after tomorrow, right?
Yeah, after tomorrow's meeting. Do we want to talk about capital tomorrow as well? Since some of that is related to highway and school.
I'd kind of like to be here, but...
Was that the most shared with finances?
I don't know. I just got it from...
Yeah, I got the email from...
Yeah, I thought you sent it to everybody.
We don't have that on the agenda, though, technically, right? So, to review capital, it's not on the...
I'd have to see what I put down as kind of a catch-all at the end of, at the end of things.
How much is in the capital account, do we know?
Well, they also recommended only spending 50 percent of it, so $75,000, which is much, much less than what's asked.
That's all they are recommending to spend.
But right now, there's no money in the account.
If there's no money in it, you can't ask for anything.
Because we haven't certified for cash, and if we ask for an extension, are we even going to have free cash before we go to town meeting?
I believe we will, but I think there was also $53,000 left in there from last year. I will double-check that.
Well, maybe we wait for capital then until Tuesday?
Oh, free cash does, yes, yeah.
Okay, let's just stick to highway and school if we can confirm schools either.
It has to be certified by the time you...
And so, when is the, when is the warrant due, I mean, when's the, when's the absolute last time we can...
I think it has to be signed by the 26th.
25th, I think it was.
Hang on a second, let me look.
It was a weekend or something. Robert said the 25th at one point, I think.
Yeah, I remember going back and forth. That could be the 25th.
I have a question of a select board meeting on the 21st, in order to meet that deadline and not push up against... So, is that what we think?
We hadn't set that. That was an idea, but we've got one, we may need another one next week. That's what I'm wondering.
You mean the week after?
Yeah, technically, technically, it would have to be signed at the latest on the 25th.
So, we're meeting on the 12th. Do we want another, another meeting on somewhere next week as well? Do we need to do that for...
So, oh, next week?
Yeah, during the, like, the 14th or something, or the 13th or 14th, I don't know, 14th.
Yeah, I actually can't think of it.
So, we'll be tomorrow night at 6:30?
And then we can decide.
Okay, so what are the next steps?
I mean, can we just do the 19th?
Yeah, we could maybe, huh, sorry?
Can we just do the 19th?
For sure, if that's enough time. I'm just unsure where we're going to be in terms of balancing budgets.
But I mean, it's only two days later than the one on the 12th. You said, you said, can we meet again another time next week, so...
I was going to, that's why I was suggesting the 14th, other than going another whole week. We're meeting on the 12th for our normal, normal meeting.
Right, right, right. Oh, okay, so we can't cover that in a normal meeting.
Right, so to think about, just reserving the 14th for another budget, budget meeting if possible, it's a Thursday, if that works for anybody. I mean, I'm just not sure how we're going to get to a balanced budget here in time for doing anything.
We used to have this Excel sheet, have a summary sheet that was like the first page, and so all the totals and stuff went back to that, so that you knew that whatever was, you know...
And the summary matched the totals.
And then you had the revenues, you know, so that you knew if you have balanced, these numbers were actual or there was no, if there was typo, it affected both pages, not just one.
Well, that's the hard thing. I mean, if we make changes in any particular budget sheet, then, you know, you've got to be sure that it gets captured.
I don't know what happened to that document, because this is part of the document.
We need to figure out how to make this easier, okay. All right, so at this point in time, I don't think we have any other business. We'll meet tomorrow night at 6:30, again, for highway and school, and we will have a regular select board meeting on the 12th, and I would like to reserve the 14th just in case of other, other budget issues.
6:00 PM?
Yeah, or, yeah, that's fine.
We're talking April 14th.
Yes, April, yep, and I don't know, finance-wise, have you got your meetings set? You're all set with meetings and your schedule?
Uh, yeah, for right now.
Okay. What do you anticipate for the week of the 18th?
Good question.
Because we talked about question the 21st. I just, I won't be able to make either of these Thursdays, and the earlier I know about meetings, the more likely I am to be able to schedule around them.
The 19th would be an open and in-between meeting. We probably need, we may have some executive session stuff to do as well. But we probably should also aim for the 19th maybe, rather than, I'd say, let's aim for the 19th as well, because somewhere along the way, we've got to do some executive work too, I think. Finish up these couple of CBAs.
Do you think we're going to need a meeting on the 21st?
Hard to say. I don't know.
I thought the whole point of having the 21st was to have it not go up against the last possible date, that it's too late to have it on the 26th.
26th is too late, for sure.
Right, and did you say...
But you can't make the 21st, you said, or you can?
I can. I'm just not sure if I need to book both Tuesday and Thursday. I'm just asking if that's what we anticipate. I just need to have a little bit of idea.
I'll book it.
Let's, let's book it to be safe, and we'll know a little bit better next week once we see where we are with the budget. How's that, okay?
And what did you say, the, it's due by, it has to be signed off on...
Has to be signed off by the 25th.
Okay, so we can't go until the 26th then?
No, cannot, all right. Okay, so I think... Finance folks, if you'd like to adjourn your meeting, feel free to make that motion to adjourn if you want to for your meeting.
We adjourn. We have, yes, we're adjourned at 8:30.
All right, sounds good.
Close your doors, adjourn to select board.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are adjourned at 8:30. Thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.